I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call please.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambeau?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
All right, we have a proclamation first off tonight.
Whereas the library card is the most important school supply of all, and public libraries play an essential role in the education and development of children, public libraries throughout this nation serve students of all ages, from early literacy classes to homework help by providing a full range of information and services and by providing free access to important educational resources for all types of learners. And whereas public libraries bridge the digital divide by making digital technology and information equally accessible to all, the Burlington Public Library is committed to lifelong education, early literacy, and student support, technology access, and digital literacy, and community engagement, and customer service. And whereas the Burlington Public Library creates opportunities for people of all ages to connect to other people, learn about the world around them, and imagine the futures before them. And whereas a free library card is the smartest card you can own, and now therefore we, the City Council of the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim that September is Library Card Sign Up Month in Burlington, and all residents are encouraged to sign up for a card at your library. Signed and sealed this fifth day of September 2017, Shane A. McCambeau, Mayor. And Mrs. Freiber, do you have something you want to say?
We have our lovely librarian with us today, who's here, is looking beautiful, I might add. Make sure you tell Steve I said that.
Well, thank you for the chance to come here tonight and to say a little bit. I think I come pretty much every September, and I think probably every time I say that while September is National Library Card Sign Up Month, any month is a good month to get a library card. And for residents of Burlington, it's an easy thing to do. You just bring in an ID, a photo ID. If it has your current address on it, perfect, it's all we need. Or you can bring in a piece of mail with that ID that has your current address. We ask you to fill out a couple lines on a form, and then we give you a card. And your card then gives you access to be able to borrow over 190,000 items. That's physical items as well as downloadable items that we have to offer. And it also gives you access to the part of our website that has a whole host of tools that you enter your library card number, and you can get online tutoring, one-on-one tutoring. You can get access to practice tests. I know this Saturday there'll be a lot of kids taking the ACT over at SEC, and there are practice ACT tests through our website. Lots of other opportunities that way as well. But September is a good time because, and libraries throughout the country recognize it, because it's the beginning of the academic year. And so it's a good time to remember that libraries have a lot to offer for students of all ages and learners of all ages. In fact, next week we start our weekly literacy classes back up again, another session of those. There's a couple of them that are full now, but there's still openings in a lot of those. We also, this week, have some programs for adults. So we have one on Thursday that is on the lost art of letter writing. We have one on Friday on Buffalo Bill. So a wide range of things that people can come and do at the library as well. And the proclamation mentioned technology. A lot of members of our community need access to Internet and to computers. I know a lot of us carry around the Internet on our phone, but if you're doing a job application, it's really hard to do that on your phone. So it helps to be able to come and sit at a PC. And I think just as importantly, maybe even more so, it helps to come somewhere like the library where there's someone there who can help you to navigate this technology. We're actually taking our tech help on the road this month, so on September 14th, we'll be at the Hy-Vee on Agency with a table doing some tech help. We're going to go down to the Bean counter a couple of times on Jefferson this month to talk books and library services, and we'll be at all of the September farmers' markets as well. So if you show your library card when you come to the farmer's market at our table, you'll get a treat. Or you can sign up for a card, and we'll give you a treat then too.
What kind of treat are you guys giving away?
Well, I know this Thursday Becky River is going to be there with her teen group, and I'm not sure what they're bringing for their treat, so I'll have to check in with her on that, see what she's got. And just bringing up the teen group, I want to say just a thank you to them. I think I may have mentioned this before, but yesterday, being a holiday, many of us had off, our teen group got together in the dark in the morning and went with the optimists to put up flags, and then in the evening got together again to take them down. So I'm really proud of those kids. And I say they'll be there Thursday, that you can come and meet them and see what they're all about too. So thank you again for this chance to talk about the opportunities that your library card gives you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Good job. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, severe liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have three resolutions. First resolution is accepting Deer Field Drive right-of-way. The second is a resolution approving an amended Energy Efficiency Plan Agreement Addendum between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Hy-Vee Supermarket at 3140 East Agency Street, Burlington, Iowa for purchase up to two charging systems. The third is a resolution approving purchase of a single axle dump truck for Public Works, Streets, and Sewer Division. We also have a public hearing for September 18th, 2017, and that will be a consideration of a permanent easement associated with the 2017 Harrison Avenue storm and sewer improvements. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items from the consent removed? I see none. Counsel?
No.
No.
Figure a motion?
Your Honor, I move to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right. This is time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending Section 135.11 driveway culverts of Chapter 135 Streets and Sidewalks of the Burlington Municipal Code. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Mr. Mack?
A few months ago, in review of the Vineyard Area Drainage Project, we were asked to take a look at the culvert ordinance. And before you is a change, is not a complete striking of the ordinance. In the beginning part of the language leaves that the installation of a driveway tube for a homeowner is still their responsibility. But what I did change was the backend that's made for the ongoing maintenance, moving it from the property owner's responsibility to the city's. And that's the change. I guess I can make a greater change than that. If you desire to have the installation, my fear with that was anytime a new property were to go up, we would be installing driveway tubes by that language.
Do you recommend making this change?
I would, I have a hard time recommending this seeing the operational changes that it would affect Public Works with. I don't know how many driveway tubes there are in the City of Burlington, but there are a lot. I'm guessing anywhere from $50,000 to $75,000 a year. That's kind of a blind shot in the dark, but it would also involve my staff time and equipment. And so I feel like it would greatly change what we do as a Public Works Department, and I don't think it would be for our benefit.
Something that came up from the city attorney in drafting this ordinance was a question as to what we were doing, just in terms of this is not something that's done anywhere else in the state. The way our language is written is currently is exactly how it is written pretty much in any other city in the state that has any discussion at all when it comes to culverts. It's a responsibility of the property owner. Just a concern from his part, if we understood the liability that we were potentially taking on with doing something different from, we have the authority to, you can do it, but just wanted to make sure that we had an understanding of where we were going here, which was countered at where anyone else is. I think you found the same thing.
Yeah, in all the research, frankly, I just Googled the chapter code that it refers to, and there was several of our comparable cities that had it. And then I made some phone calls to some of the others that didn't, I didn't clearly see it in their code. I think Muscatine was the one where they did go out and they did fix stuff, but they also billed back to the property owner. So they would go in and replace the culvert and driveway, but then they would see it as either a bill or an assessment. I didn't have that clear answer whether it was a bill or an assessment, but...
Thank you.
Comments, concerns from the audience? Yes, sir.
John Bowden, 2216 Vineyard. I guess my first question is, why didn't we have a hearing about driveway culverts when you changed the code originally? You know, I did not know about this, and I follow things fairly closely.
When was it? 2001 or something?
I don't know when it was done.
Yeah, 2001, exactly. There was no hearing about changing the code then.
In order to change, there had to be, there had to be a hearing, otherwise the code kind of had changed. If that was the time that there was a complete update of the code book?
There was. That was, that was the time.
So it would have been listed as one of several. You wouldn't have seen it individually listed, but it was listed along with several others.
So I went through the, I got the information from the secretary, and it did not list that individually on the list of things.
I see.
And one of the things that it did say was, in her notes, was that code changes too numerous to lists. So that means you changed a whole bunch of codes at that time, and nobody really knew about it. I didn't know about it. I didn't know about it until three or four years ago, when I came down and was talking to Jim about it. And then we went and looked at the code book and saw that it was changed in 2001. So nobody knew about this, certainly I didn't, until long after the fact. There are, there are some cities that don't have this code. There are some cities. Most of them do, but there are some cities that don't. My concern about this is this, is that from my research, in the early 50s, because of flooding on Vineyard Street, the city came out and installed the culverts underneath the driveways, dug the ditches, brought it all to a point in front of my house, and then put in a 16-inch cement pipe that goes all the way around my property, underground, down to my Pleasant Street. That was their answer to flooding on Vineyard Street. They paid for all that. They dug the ditches, they designed it, they put the culverts underneath the driveways, they called it their storm sewer system. And it worked. It did, it drained all the water in there. Over the years, and the lack of maintenance from the city, it's all filled in now. All the culverts underneath the streets are all squashed over, underneath the alleys are all squashed over. Driveways, a lot of them have rusted out or squashed over. Vineyard Street is kind of unique in this case, that it's not like a residential street someplace else where you have 25 cars going by there a day. There are 500 cars a day drive up and down Vineyard. So the chances of somebody driving down that street and meeting a dump truck, or a bus, or a school bus, and they move over and run over your culvert and squash it down, is great. So it's pretty hard to hold the homeowner responsible for 500 cars a day. Now, it wouldn't be quite so bad if the city buses, the school buses, commercial trash trucks from the large industrial base that you've allowed to build up on the end of Vineyard didn't come up and down the street, but they do. So I don't know how you can hold property owners responsible for 500 cars a day and some other guy driving over it. I, I wonder about when you change the code, and a lot of times, people are grandfathered in. If you, like when you change the amount of distance from the edge of your house to the property, you didn't make people move the house to fit the new code. Another thing to think about, on my water bill, I pay for sewer. Storm sewer and sanitation sewer. I pay for that water, that runoff water, to run through the city storm sewer. Now, if I'm now going to own the culvert that runs underneath my driveway, shouldn't I get paid from the city for that water running in my storm sewer?
Doesn't work that way, but...
If you have a, and in Burlington we have a lot of these, where we've got the old underground brick storm sewers and sanitation sewers. Now, let's take an area where there's a lot of maintenance, because these bricks are starting to give away. Are you then going to abandon those because Public Works says it's too much for them to keep up? And put those underground brick storm sewers on the landowners, homeowners? Isn't that the same thing you're doing here? Thank you.
Thank you. Well said.
Any other comments or questions or concerns from the audience?
Tim Scott, 2017, South 15th Street. Back when Ron Canoke was the Public Works Director, he most emphatically told me that the ditches and culverts were part of the city's stormwater system. I wanted to fill them in. I thought that was a better way of handling the problem that we were having in a certain part of town. And when he explained it, he didn't just say it, he explained it. Made perfectly good sense. So if that's the case, then why don't we take care of that like we do the storm sewers in front of your house, and your house, and your house, and my house? And I'm not sure where you live, Annie, so, but it's, we don't have to worry about storm water. We've got, we've got curbs and gutters, we've got catch basins, and our storm water just disappears. We don't have to pay anything for it, other than the same utility bill that's being paid by those that have ditches and culverts. And maybe no other city in town, or no other city in the state does this, but why be follower? Why can't we be a leader on this? We are, after all, charging a stormwater utility fee, and these folks deserve it as well as anybody. And I know that about seven years ago, we finally started redoing silk-coated streets, which the staff had told us we didn't have the money or the time for, and it was going to be too expensive, and now we've covered most of those streets with a, with fresh silk coat. And hopefully have a plan for the future to maintain them, that we can do the same thing with culverts and ditches. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Could I add one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I did forget to mention that the city maintained these. Like I said before, the city installed these, and that was their storm sewer system, and the city maintained them for 50 years. Because like in, and I don't remember the exact year, but it might have been like 1985. My culvert underneath my driveway rusted out, and I called the city, Public Works, and they said, yeah, that's ours. And they came out and they replaced it, and they didn't charge me anything. They replaced a 10-foot section there. Now, at that time, I asked the guy that was installing it, I said, you know, I don't want somebody driving over the edge of it. Can I have it a little longer than it should be? And he says, yeah, but he says, we only pay for 10 feet. He said, if you want another couple of feet, you'd have to pay for that. And I said, fine. So I added five more feet onto that, and I paid for that five feet, and the city paid for that 10 feet. Because at that time, they said that was their responsibility. Like Tim said, it was their storm sewer system that they installed. Now, I don't know about the rest of Burlington, whether the city installed it or the homeowner installed it, I don't know. But I do know on the 2200 and 2300 block of Vineyard, the city installed that and maintained it for 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I'm not in favor of approving this, based on staff recommendations and attorney recommendation.
Do you have a comment on this? I'm s... I think part of the, I mean philosophically, when you think about what's going on with the culvert, we do use the ditches there for drainage. We give permission to the property owners to cross that drainage area with a driveway to attach to the street, and that puts a blockade onto the drainage system. Part of the privilege of having the driveway connection is the crossing of where that drainage is, is to make sure that you allow that drainage to still flow freely, which puts that cost of you maintain that culvert underneath your drive. Now, I also understand the arguments that are made from, from the audience, but that is philosophically the argument that's why that responsibility typically relies, lies on the property owner to maintain over time. But that's still a council decision about how policy goes.
Yeah. I always like to get your advice, your input.
Well, before we vote, is anybody have any, any other comments before we vote? Lou?
Well, this is on the ordinance itself, this isn't on the project, so...
Right, right.
I think there are other ways we can obviously go about maybe addressing culverts and things like that, making, making our streets more efficient, whether they are smaller side streets, but still unfortunately more traveled, just because of where they are in the city and what is around them. I think we have a lot of we and the future council, and it's going to be a huge project, but there's obviously a lot more work that needs to be done, making those kinds of side streets more efficient and able to last longer. Because I think obviously if we were to just fix it the way it was, it's not gonna, it's not gonna hold up. It's gonna cost more, it's gonna cost more man-hours to maintain culverts from our staff point of view. I don't think it's the way to go, and obviously from, for this ordinance, I don't think we need to, I think the ordinance needs to stay the same as what it is, so...
You think what you say, what about the ordinance?
That it needs to stay the way it is, not the proposed change. If there is an issue with culverts, there's obviously an issue with the street. I mean, there's an issue with culverts then, not the fact that they're just not efficient. So, yeah, I don't know. I don't think we need to change the ordinance.
I'm, yeah, I'm prepared to vote yep, but I definitely am not sure about this moving forward. This again is the, this is the first, the first reading. Already had you come up, but Marlon, you didn't get a chance to speak, and I did see your hand, so before we vote, I will...
Marlon McKee, 1121 South 12th Street. I don't have a dog in this fight, but I know what you're talking about. I think a big problem out there is that the culvert, the area between the culverts isn't kept clean, and that would be the city's responsibility. I used to work for the utility, and they would do that on a regular basis. So when they, when those ditches are filled up with the gravel that's been put on Vineyard Street, then they get into the culverts to make the culverts not work right. So I think maybe that is an issue that should be looked at, is getting the ditches so they flow water. Now, I say I don't have the dog in the fight because I don't live out there, but having driven that street, knowing people that have lived along there, and I've noticed that the ditches fill up, like I say, from the gravel when they resurface those roads over the years. So that's, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, ladies, Marlon. Counsel, you guys good?
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending Section 135.11 driveway culverts of Chapter 135 Streets and Sidewalks of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Davidson?
No.
Okay, next we have consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Vineyard Street Area Drainage Project.
Before we go, do you want to explain what that, what that means?
That means that we're not moving forward.
A 2-2 vote is a fail.
Right, okay. I just want everybody to understand that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Consideration of plans and specs for the 2017 Vineyard Street Area Drainage Project.
Jesse Howes, city engineer. I'm just going to give a brief overview of what the project is, if that's fine with everybody. Basically, what this project consists of is ditching in Vineyard along with replacing culverts and putting storm infrastructure in key places to prevent any localized flooding in the Vineyard area. There was $313,000 allotted for this, and currently our engineers estimate it's right around 305, and that includes the cost of replacing culverts, doing any ditch work, and really everything we just talked about with the, with the culvert ordinance change. I could give you a little bit of a breakdown of what those costs are for the culverts, if you guys are interested.
Please.
Yes, I'd like to hear that.
We have roughly, probably around 1,000 lineal foot of culverts being replaced with this job. That amount, 41 culverts, and the rough cost...
1,000 linear feet with just?
All the culverts that are being replaced, so...
With just the Vineyard project?
With just the Vineyard project. So, and we're planning on replacing every culvert, because it doesn't take long looking. I really haven't found any that are worth salvaging in that area. Correct, the ones under the streets and the ones under the driveways make up that 1,000 feet of culvert. The cost per lineal foot to replace a culvert is roughly $25. So the total cost for this project in culverts is $24,000.
Do you know what the difference is between what's under the public right-of-way alleys and streets versus private drives?
The only difference between our streets and some of the drives is maybe the, the drives are smaller.
No, out of the thousands lineal feet, how much of that is under private drives?
Oh, I would say 60 to 70 percent.
So...
There's no way to leverage...
About $16,000 to $17,000 worth of culverts that you're talking about in this project is what we're having a discussion about.
60, 63...
$24,000.
$24,000 for the full 1,000.
For the full, yep.
But only 60 to 70 of it is, 60 to 70 percent is under private drives.
Correct.
So that's...
Somewhere in the $16,000 to $17,000 range.
$16,000 to $17,000.
Well, that's a different number than what we had understood before.
Yes, I thought the number was 50.
Yeah.
That changes, changes quite a bit on that. Particularly... Particularly since we're talking about culverts that run under the street and the alley as opposed to private.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, because I was out there walking the other day, and I had a hard time finding where all these, you know, thousand feet of culverts were.
A lot of them were buried.
Yeah. Okay.
So, any more questions for me before I open it up to everybody else?
Yeah, thank you, Jesse.
I did want to put out, in terms of how our discussion went last week in talking with the attorney about what your options would be, he had talked about how our current code is written. If you were to say that the property owners had to replace now the culverts weren't our cost, you could eliminate the culverts from the project. And you could order them essentially by our current code to do their... to do the work, or we do it for them. The current code allows for us to do it for them, bill them, if they don't do it themselves. If they don't pay the bill to do the assessment. That's how our current code is written. He also stated that you do have the option, even though you didn't make a change to the ordinance just now, you do have the option with this because of the size and scope of this project that you're doing, to go ahead and make a decision to pay for the culverts for this project area because of the scope of the project that you're doing and just move forward and do that. And that doesn't put you in a position that you are now liable to have to do every culvert that needs repaired in town. This is... You have a specific purpose and that you have an overall project that you're trying to make happen as you move forward.
There's no way that we can leverage some of this with sewer separation? I mean, there's a...
If we say we're not gonna do private culvert, then that just means they have no driveway. I mean, if we do the project without culverts, then there's no driveway.
You need the culvert somehow.
Yeah.
And as you're... For context, after speaking with the attorney and what you're... Kind of how he would say what you're framing, what your options are, I guess I would recommend that you go with that last option that I just mentioned. And one of the big reasons is you've already told it. We prepared this project from several months ago. You said we'd pay for them, and it makes sense that you follow through. However, if you don't choose to do that, that certainly is the prerogative of the council.
But you're saying if we do decide to pay, this does not contradict the ordinance? It does not require us to change the ordinance?
Correct, and that's basically from what his comments are is you are... You have a scope that you're trying to accomplish here. You have the prerogative to say we'll take this on as part of it.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments, concerns from the audience? No, I'm just playing, come on.
I like, um... Jesse here. He's a pretty nice guy, and he's not only intelligent, but he's street smart too, and I appreciate that. The only concern that I have about his design is that the big ditch on 2216 Vineyard, I would like that thing so that it is completely covered up. He wants to kind of partially cover it up and take the plate way down and then build a ramp type of thing there. And you saw the pictures of the car that flipped over on Vineyard Street. And I think if you build any kind of a ramp there, you're still gonna have the same problem as far as safety goes. I would like to see him modify that so that he puts a pipe in to connect those two so that he can drop the grate down about a foot only from the road. That way, all the water will run in there. But still, if a car runs over that, you're only gonna have to drop down just one foot, not two feet or not three feet. I think that's safer. So I've been talking to him about that, so you might want to keep that in mind.
Any other comments from the audience? Mr. Scott?
Tim Scott, 2017 South 15th. Explain again what's... Where we're at on this. The culverts aren't going to be paid for by the city, so it's gonna be the responsibility of the property owners, correct?
That's a decision that the council still has to make after they get out of this public hearing. It's designed for all the work to be done. They still have to make a decision how they're gonna address the culverts.
Okay. I would add a suggestion, and this has worked rather well in the past, is this project is actually neighborhood-driven. It's not driven by the city staff.
Right.
I would, after approving the project, I would contact all of the property owners and explain to them that it's been passed, that the project is a go. And if they want to continue, they're gonna have to pay for the culverts. And if they so choose to do that, problem solved. If they don't, then you drop the project. We've had... And put the caveat out there that if you do want to do this, we'll create an assessment district and allow you to be... To pay this over a ten-year period through your property taxes. We've done this with many a projects over the last several years, at least five is involved on council, with anywhere... Mostly street projects where we upgraded streets. Went from silk-coated streets to concrete streets or asphalt streets. And it worked very well. There was also neighborhoods that by code, we build a street twenty-seven foot wide. If they want parking on both sides, they need to petition and ask for it and get a supermajority in the neighborhood to proceed with the project. I would maybe use the same approach and let them... Let the neighborhood decide and tell them they have so many days to respond and and if you get a supermajority, move forward with the project and and we know that we've got neighborhood... The rest of the neighborhood's support for it. If you... Don't do that, then you're liable to have a lot of upset folks if it's being forced down their throat, because a few in the neighborhood want it. But I think there's more than a few.
I like that. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Anybody else from the audience?
I have one more question. I want to make sure that I understand what Jim was talking about. That you could approve paying for the driveway culverts on this project because of the large scope for it without changing the code.
Changing the ordinance.
Is it... Am I correct in that?
That's what he said.
That's what he said, yes. Okay, so you will be considering that? Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Again, with that recommendation or that suggestion, I would not normally make that suggestion based off of how our code is written. The only reason that I offer that is something for you to think about is based off of you talked about this a couple of months ago that we were gonna pay for.
Right on.
And you certainly can...
And an attorney has...
Said it's acceptable. But it is up to you if you want to change your mind and do it by how the code is in existence. The process that Tim laid out is the... Takes a little bit of time and puts it on the property owners to decide as a group whether they want the project to move forward. It is, however, different than how he were talking about it two months ago, so.
Anything else you want to throw in on that?
I think I've thrown in more than I like to say.
Counsel, anything else?
That's enough for me.
All right. Let's get a motion.
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2017 Vineyard Street Area Drainage Project.
Second.
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
No.
Okay.
You've approved the project, the plan specs, and it does include all the culverts. Are we to assume that that... How are we to address the... Who's paying for it? I'm kind of lost on that. Do you need that as a...
The plan got approved the way it's written, so the city's taking care of it.
I'll make sure that... I'll make sure that we're okay with that, but I think...
Okay, okay. All right.
If there's something else we need to do, I'll bring it back to you.
Just specifically for this particular project, since it was...
It just seemed like backtracking and going around in circles since we've discussed it one way for months and planned it one way for months for us to turn around and let's make some changes now that we're at the end of discussion.
I'm never against last-minute changes, just for the record. Whatever it takes, I never against that, so.
I know we've... But can I... Jesse, what was the timeline on this?
So the timeline on this, we... I believe we're going to get bids back at the end of September, I believe, is where we were at with it. Early October, somewhere in that ballpark.
And some construction next spring or yet this fall?
Maybe yet this fall, but I'd prefer not to tear up everybody's yards and then leave it that way through the winter.
Yeah, they probably would do. Okay, thank you.
Man, they've had a problem there for a long time.
All right.
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance of the City of Burlington, Iowa by amending the standard penalty for violation of the city code.
Second.
Moved in second twice. Mr. Teslin?
Pass the chief.
Pass the chief.
We're good?
Yep.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I'm sorry, I should have at the work session suggested we waive, but we can't at this point, so. Sorry, we'll have to go through it again.
All right, we'll try to go through it easy. Okay. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution awarding contract 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements.
Second.
Mr. Mack?
The resolution before you awards contract to Phi Excavating is you'll notice in your packet there was two bids. KNA Excavating submitted a bid for $104,000, I believe. The next day, they withdrew their bid due to an underestimation of the project. The engineer's estimate was at 248, I believe.
Two eighty.
Two eighty.
Wow.
So Phi's bid of 243, I believe, is well below our estimate and is acceptable. The award is suggested to be awarded contingent upon BNSF approval. The way that the storm sewer is being discharged, it'll be discharged underneath... It's a box sewer, I believe, underneath BNSF Railroad. And they have to review it to make sure we're not causing them any undue water issues, so. Should they change or have a request that something needs to be changed with the scope, we would at that point end the contract and redesign what we would have to redesign and then go back out to bid again. But so this would be awarding contingent upon BNSF approval.
Before you go, this letter from KNA, are we okay with this or we're gonna...
Yeah, we're okay with it. Technically, you probably could have bid bond on it. But seeing the second contractor is well below the estimate. And as a contract we've used in the past, we feel comfortable just a warning bid to Phi.
So we're not holding this against them?
No.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right. I have a resolution authorizing purchase of real property at 503 Holstein Street.
Second.
Moved in second. Mr. Mack?
This resolution approves purchasing the property seen here at 503 Holstein. A few months ago, we had a conversation about the correction to Patterson Street, as you remember, last September. We had a rainstorm that caused some major erosion that the road has been closed since then. After that, staff took a look at the different types of options, and you'll see that in the memo, the different cost breakdowns, of which this purchase would allow us to go in and create a berm or redo the slope. In the...
So, okay, so your cost with this option between the soil berm and the purchase of the land and some excavation or demo for the building, you're looking at a project that's a little over $100,000.
Correct, and the next nearest cost project was about $188,000 with the retaining wall, $197,000 for a gabion wall. So it makes cost sense to be able to purchase this property. We had the conversation...
And we're good with the slope and everything?
Yep.
I mean, it's...
That's all I really have. I can go into some more details about the prior conversation about the purchase of this. The attorney... Our attorney had negotiated a price with the representative, so.
Thank you for doing that, by the way. I really appreciate it.
We feel fairly comfortable in the price, given the context of what it would take to get this property.
Good deal.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Okay, counsel?
I'm good.
You're good? Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Well done, all right. You guys have been fantastic tonight. We certainly appreciate you. Let's just keep it going. At this time, we'll entertain comments from the audience. Anything that we have not covered tonight? Okay. Are you coming up here, Marlon, or are you leaving?
Are you... Is this open for anything or is this for stuff for...
Well, it depends. What do you want to talk about? Come on, Marlon, if you got something, come on.
Marlon McKee, 1121 South 12th Street. If this is open for anything, last week, you had a presentation about a TIF project from Oldford.
Mr. Cahill.
West Avenue?
Dan Cahill, thank you. I couldn't remember the name. Yeah, on West Avenue. And it said that if he got the TIF, then he was talking about putting the street on through over to Mason Road. He doesn't own the property on over to Mason Road.
That's right.
He owns a small section up at the front, I believe, because it has not gone through the court system yet as to who owns that property. But my thing is, he's, according to the article, he's the only person that's ever used a TIF before. Now it's for pheasant run, which he's completed out there, which was tying into the other guy that wanted to do the TIF pro deal. He said if he doesn't get the TIF money, that he's gonna be a corn farmer. I doubt that very much. I don't think we should be using TIF for housing developments. And especially when they bought the land knowing that, you know, that's what was going on. If he wants to build houses in there, because they just tore a house down, about two houses down from there, and have subdivided that into two lots and are gonna be selling that. And they're not asking for TIF money. So I don't think we should be looking at giving any contractor TIF money to build houses in the $250,000 range. If he wants to build houses for $80,000, maybe. But I don't think TIF money should be used that way. It's supposed to be for blighted areas. Now, Jim tells me there's something in there that can be used, but the city council, as it stands right now, there's only really two people that are guaranteed they're gonna be here next year. Bob, I'm sorry, but, you know, things could happen.
That's right.
You're up for reelection. Jim's not gonna be here, Tim's not here anymore. So I don't think we should be making decisions for the next city council.
Okay.
We got kind of tied up into... And Jim had got us out of all the crap that happened for the manor and other things, so. You know, we need to be keeping our tax dollars for us, not helping millionaires make more money.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. You guys have been a lovely audience tonight. We certainly appreciate that. Mr. Teslin? Nothing. Kathleen? Counsel lady?
Got nothing.
You got nothing?
Except go to the farmer's market Thursday.
Okay.[1796.95] Okay.
And stop and see the people from the library, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Get your treat with your Iberry card.
The only thing I've got is, oh, Jim Davidson is gonna be celebrating his birthday in two days. So if you're out and about on Wednesday and you happen to see Mayor Pro-Tim, former mayor, current councilman and all of that stuff, former teacher.
Thursday?
Thursday, my fault, yeah. Today's Tuesday, right. Thursday, thank you whoever caught me on that. Make sure you get a chance to, to wish Jim a happy birthday. He's gonna be 92 in dog years. I don't know how he is in real life, but, again, what a blessing, and he's been such a blessing to Burlington, so we don't want to make sure we recognize that. That's all I've got. Jim?
I told my wife I should bite my tongue. There are, but I'm not going to. I'm gonna say this. 14 people have filed papers and 15 count, Mr. Fleming. There ought to be 14 people sitting out here in this audience. Where are they?
Preach.
Okay.
I got a, I met with a citizen Sunday who wanted to compliment the city and specifically the streets department. He lives on Shamrock. And he said recently, city crew is in there repairing some street stuff. I don't know exactly what. But he said, "I was so impressed with the quality of the work," and he said even more so, "the quality of the men that were working there."
Sweet.
And I said, "Well, I really appreciate you sharing that with me, and I'm gonna pass it on to others." So be sure and tell your guys that way, please.
Awesome.
That's all I have at this time.
All right. City manager?
So I guess begrudgingly, I'll be on the radio tomorrow morning.
I think I'll call in.
Sussman just pointed you down, man.
You, you do have the council interviews next, next time. I think that we'll put that at the beginning, just so as you have a discussion about it.
Do you have a, do you have a procedure in mind for that or how we're gonna do that or?
I think that you just, this is your interview process. This is, you're the ones who-
Well, we haven't talked about it, and technically we can't talk about it, but.
No, but I, I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna run pretty smooth.
All right, okay.
We'll, we'll get right down to it.
We'll find out, I guess.
But I guess the, the hope that I have is that it'll, at least through that process, you don't make a final decision. The final decision, or the, the official decision with the name is approved at the following meeting, but you have to decide whose name you're putting in there.
Right.
And I, I guess I would hope that you'd be able to have them be involved in the, then the rest of the discussion items so that they can have an understanding and you can be getting some input from them too as part of that process.
That's a good idea.
I, I wanted to, I just want to, I'll go and throw this out there now. I wanted to eliminate-
You need to, at this point, just wait.
Okay, all right. Fine, Jim, fine.
You get a little bit beyond there.
Right.
Sorry about that, but Paint-a-thon is going on this week. I don't know how many houses are on, on slate. They've averaged about 20 a year. I think they're a little under that for this year. City crew will be working on that primarily on Thursday. I know we have a lot of folks who are gonna be involved with that. We even know where that house is.
I was gonna ask.
I didn't ask you that ahead of time. What? 1203 Linden is the one that we're working on.
Okay.
And typically what we don't get done in that one day, some of Eric's crew still gets to finish up the following day. Hopefully, we're able to get all of it done.
Looks like it's gonna be a beautiful day for it.
On Thursday.
That's good.
And I think all of you got a copy of the training that's being done, Iowa Homeland Security's putting on.
Yeah.
On the 15th. If any of you are wanting to be involved in that, that's crisis leading and decision-making for elected officials. Let us, let myself or Katie know and we can make sure you get registered. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Before, what was that, what was that comment you made again, Jim?
Concerning, yeah.
Oh, I, I will throw out, I'm sorry, before you get, the Apollo building. I, I did let you all know, but just a reminder for the, for the public too. We did get that closed finally. It's been a, a long process.
Yes.
But hopefully that will, we'll see some work occur there over the next few months. But that property has, the, the paperwork's all been signed and a check given to us to-
Wow.
To consummate the sale.
Sweet, sweet. Good deal, good deal. You're good to go? Assistant city manager?
It's been asked to me several times. You may have noticed there's some work going on on the Great River Bridge. There's some scaffolding with some tarps. The DOT is putting some sealant on there. You will notice it'll change from concrete to kind of a wider color, lighter color. But I just wanted to let you know what that was. Secondly, Agency Street, they're gonna do some final pourings this week.
Sweet.
Should, you should see a switch to the other lane end of next week, beginning of the following week.
Good. Thanks.
All right, man, buzzing right along. They're not wasting any time, so. Nothing else? We're good?
Your honor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's make it official.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right, this meeting's adjourned. Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, counsel.